Tuesday, October twenty eighth, five thirty P M. If everyone will stand for the pledge, stand and pray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father is in prayer. Father God, we come before you to give prayer today, thankful for everything that you have done for us and thankful for everything that you will do for us. Father, I ask that you give everyone in here a measure of wisdom tonight as we go about handling the business of the city of Toluula. And when we leave tonight, Father, make sure that we make it safely home to our families. These things we pray in the name of your son, Jesus Christ. Amen. Roll call, please.
Wells?
Day?
Here.
Houston?
Here.
Harris? But I can't read my own writing here.
Here.
Scott?
Here.
So, and, uh...
It's Houston.
Here. We didn't have a call. Mr. Wells is not here yet. I hadn't heard that he's not coming, so I'm assuming not today. Okay. Do we have any public comments on the agenda? Any public comments on the agenda? At this time, I entertain a motion to enter public hearing.
Motion to enter public hearing.
Proper motion by Ms. Houston, second by Mr. Scott, to enter public hearing. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, so we are in public hearing now. We are discussing tonight the ordinance to approve the municipal budgets for the city of Toluula for fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty five, and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty six. I think I've let everybody know before that we are late on the budget. Should have been done by June thirtieth. So, we will have an audit finding, our upcoming audit for that, for this particular fiscal year. So, how I'd like to do this tonight is, we'll start, we'll let Mr. Odom give the general overview of the budget. Ms. Cindy, if Cindy has anything to add on, then we'll let her add on. From there, we will allow Councilman Wells and Councilperson Harris, since they are the members of the Budget Committee, to provide their comments. And then we'll go to the rest of the council. And from there, we will go to the audience. So, audience, I'm gonna ask if you guys can hold your comments until the council members have all given their information. That way, you have a little bit more before you provide, make your comments. So, at this time, Gerald?
Well, it's pretty much like it is every year. We start out with our revenues, right on the front page. And our two chief revenue contributors are property tax, which I have pledged in four hundred and six thousand, and fire protection, one hundred and ten thousand. Sales tax, I have let remain the same as it was in the prior years because I think it would be well to make it this year. So, the sales tax is a million, eight hundred and eighty-four thousand. Air on down, our revenues are not that fantastic as far as amounts. But since I have given you the main ones, I'll be happy to take any chances. I mean, take any questions on what we discussed so far.
Cindy, if you don't have anything to add at this point, I think we will allow Councilwoman Harris and Councilman Wells, who, whichever would like to go first, to provide any comments that you guys might have.
The ordinance is under recreation. So, I still need to know if we were able to get a new stove and a...
At the community center? So, we did get the L G A P, the fifty thousand dollar grant. It has been signed off by the state. We have been given authorization to incur costs. So, actually got, talked to a gentleman about the dinner booth. Probably talked to them and a couple of others just to, you know, to see who has the best price. But we should have enough to get the dinner booth done, a new stove, and hopefully the floor in the community center re-done from the lobby all the way back. If there's anything else left, then, you know, you can use the entire fifty thousand to be spent at the community center.
It can be used in the code of law.
My little thing, excuse me. You said something about fifty thousand for the community center?
Right.
Have they had your check?
Yeah. Yeah, it's a reimbursement rate.
Okay.
So, when do we get this grant? When do we get it? My first time here, and then we receive one?
So, I spoke about this before in a meeting. We got the grant agreement a couple of weeks ago.
So, did it give us anything, stayed in here, received the grant? Because that is my first time hearing about it.
Yeah, we got the grant agreement in the mail. If you'd like to have a copy of it, I said we can make a copy of it.
And I think this has, of course, it should fall under the community center. As, who is Harris? Well, my concern, as one of the Budget Committee members, is, uh, as it always been, this entire process was not transparent. We really had no say-so in the development of the budget at all. The concerns we expressed when it came to the budget was never met or addressed. When it comes to developing the instrument or developing the budget in the actual funding that we wanted or thought should have been applied to the budget. Because when we came, budgets already, numbers already figured out, put into the budget, never had a total recollection of how much finances, how much revenue, how much money we had on hand at the city. So, yeah, from my standpoint, as being on the Budget Committee, we was just in name. Can't sign off on nothing that we played a part in. So, I think we only have like fifteen thousand dollars in recreation or something like that, and I think it should be more. But because we had no part on the say-so in the numbers as a Budget Committee, I can't go along with it. And, uh, Mr. Odom, how much do we have in revenues? How much does the city is expecting in revenues for this budget?
Well, it's about three point two million dollars.
Okay. Three point two? Can you tell what page that's on?
Three point four.
Three point four.
Three point four million? Okay. How much are we expecting in expenses?
It's, that plus about another hundred and eighty thousand.
Three point six.
Three point six. And according to Revised Statute Thirty-nine, colon thirteen oh five, which is state law, the budget expenses cannot exceed the revenues.
Plus equity, fund balance. For any equity, it's included in, in resources available for appropriations.
According to this, I don't see no one here.
It is part of resources available for appropriations.
According to Revised Statute Thirty-nine, colon thirteen oh five, alphabet E. I'll pass it out, you know. And so, I'm gonna have, I want you all to have a copy of it. It says, "The total of proposed expenditures shall not exceed the total of estimated funds available for the ensuing year." It doesn't say? So, but where is it?
Said, can we just let it finish?
Okay.
Okay. Can you go into the law where it says about this? Revenues, what have you saying?
When it says funds available, that's part of your equity. The, your excess amounts from prior years is part of funds that are available for appropriations.
Why doesn't it say this on here?
Well, it does, it just says it in a different way.
What way does it say it?
It just says funds available. So, technically, the definition of funds available is your revenues that you're budgeting plus any residual equity.
Okay, where is that in this budget? How much residual do we have?
Well, it's not actually in the budget, but I can tell you how much we had for the general fund at the end of the year and last year, and it was one point eight million, one point nine million dollars.
Okay. So, now, that's the same residual that you said? Is that the same residual that you said the city can use to offset the finances of the last fiscal year?
Okay, excuse me, it's one point seven of the balance.
Right. And that's the same residual that, uh, Imran Lewis stated that you told that we can use to, uh, offset some of the deficits that we had last year? That's correct?
Yes, yes.
Right. So, if we use that to offset the deficit we had last year, that means that's no longer available?
That part's not, no.
So, what were the other excesses we have there?
Well, we didn't use the whole, the fund balance for last year.
How much did we not use?
The final number has not been told yet because I'm still working on recording all the payables and information.
And, and see, that's where we get in trouble at. That's where we get in trouble at. You all come with a lot of lip service about what's available, and we can do this, we can do that. But you never have it in writing. Then when I ask you, how much do we have left in excess? We don't have the total number yet. So, if you all can never give us the final figures, I think it's unfair to come in here and tell me we got excess funds we can use. That's just lip service. My mom always told me, if it's not written down, it didn't happen. If you don't have it in black and white, it's not true. So, when we put a budget together, okay? You said funds available. It said the total of proposed expenditure not exceed the total of estimated funds available. So, if those funds was available, why wasn't it not included when we first prepared the budget?
Well, it's an estimated amount at that point because the year hasn't been closed down.
Again, if there's funds that are available for us, why wasn't it included in the budget?
There should have been a line added at the bottom, which was not.
Right. Which means the budget that has been posted, the budget that has been published, is a deficit budget. Correct?
I guess so.
Right. And so, state law says you cannot publish or post a deficit budget. Is that correct?
On that, I don't know.
It's here. It says you cannot do it. You cannot do it. We did the same thing last year. We posted a deficit budget last year, and you cannot do that according to state law. And we've been asking you all about transparency the entire time. And you know you can't do that.
No. Okay. So, that wasn't an audit?
Let me clear that question up. Okay, let me clear that question up. Our audit has never tagged us for anything except they say we have a documentation that's not been supported with credit card uses. That's the same thing.
Okay, so let's, let's stay on task here. She just asked a question, and I answer her.
And I responded to the statement, and you answered. So, our auditor, that we always get every time, the court.
Okay, but that's your opinion. She asked me a question.
So, maybe I'm talking.
Nobody asked for your opinion. She asked me a question.
And then you asked a question. But again, she asked a question. See, that's...
You're giving your opinion.
You want everybody to respect you. But you show very little respect when someone else is talking, very little. So, now, the question that was posed to her at the table was this. Were you cited, what she whispered to you? Were you tagged about that in the audit? I heard the question. And so, my response was, we are never tagged in the audit for anything that that's financial.
Which is yours?
So, now, again, and, and so, when it comes to whether it's tagged or not, I know it's not because it never is. But the law clearly states whether it's tagged or not. The law states you cannot publish a deficit budget. And that's a gay deal, Mike. You not familiar with it? You not familiar with Tony Gray?
You can go ahead with your...
No, I'm asking Tony Gray a question. She went up to the city, so I'm asking her a question.
Mayor, may I be recognized? Councilman Wells, have you never had an audit finding? Last year, we didn't have audit findings?
No. But we, we had one with, um, the section eight, failed to adopt the budget, failed to adopt the budget. We, we talked about the special revenue fund. I talked about the entire year, about why we don't have a special fund, budgets for all of our special funds. They kept saying we didn't have to have them.
So, there, so there were findings. So, your statement, your generalization order that we're never tagged for anything on audit is not only incorrect, but it's something that's incorrect, and you knew it was incorrect when you stated it.
No, but I'm saying this, okay? When there's something that's major when it comes to our finances. Now, see, the section eight budget, only why that came up is I brought the question up several times. You understand? See, prior to that, it was never brought up until I started asking questions about those budgets. And I asked Mr. Murray sitting there, why isn't that in the budget? Just like for several years, it was stated that the Toluula Housing Authority was a defunct organization until I asked him, why are you all saying it's a defunct when we still have finances coming in? So, nothing comes out in our audit until I ask certain questions. So, when I ask questions about it, then it shows up in our audit. So, then I ask follow-up questions about have we, like I asked you about the finances for the Toluula Housing Authority. You stated that, uh, the company filed bankruptcy, never brought us documentation, never told us when it was filed, never heard anything else about it. You never did a follow-up on it. Why not? So, when we talk about finances...
Right now, we're in public hearing.
I, I, I'm there with the budget. I'm there with the budget.
And we're getting on subject here.
No, we're not, we're not. Because the housing authority is still part of the budget. So, we have a company that manages our housing complexes that we still have financial records on. Attorney Gray said they filed bankruptcy, has never brought us any court documentation stating they filed bankruptcy. Why haven't we got that?
He sent you all a letter. You have it. He sent it.
He sent a letter, but there's no court documentation saying the... What, what was the file? Uh, bankruptcy filed, when was it filed?
That's not what the letter says. You can go back and review it. But that's not part of what the discussion's about this evening.
No, you sent a letter stating they filed bankruptcy. We never saw no official court proceedings. We got a letter written from you.
You can go back and look at your letter. That's on the agenda this evening.
I know what's my finances for the housing. I know, you can't play with me, I ain't crazy. But the law states you cannot file a deficit budget. And we still don't have a financial records from the Toluula Housing Authority. So, when you have comments about the budget for one way in violation, we filed, did we publish a deficit budget? That's number one. So, even our meeting tonight is improper because it's a deficit budget.
Okay. Mr. Scott?
I just know it shouldn't have taken this long to come over the question. I know the last three years that I was associated with, pretty long time, myself and this day, the two years, and myself and this same year. I don't think there's any excuse for not taking this long to get it accomplished.
And you as part of the Budget Committee that we end up being in financial distress as well. Make sure you mention that.
Okay, hey, now, go back and forth. Mr. Scott? Okay, go ahead and finish.
I came up here out of my time, several days, and did it on time. You had the same opportunity, sir.
I came up here several days as well. And the information we asked for was not pressed. You also tried to come to a meeting legally, and you weren't supposed to be here.
Councilman Wells, we're gonna let him, he's patient. You'd like to speak after me?
I should, will.
Cindy, you have been working beside us, I was sure of this budget. What are your comments as far as of being in compliance?
Well...
Out of compliance, should I say?
Well, the only part that's missing is the, you know, how you were going to fund that little bit of a deficit, and it just should have shown what we had, what funds available, you know, that from last year. And it would have been an estimate at this point in time.
So, I asked her, can we just publish a deficit budget? Ask that question.
Cindy, can we publish a deficit budget?
Technically, no.
Thank you.
Okay.
But it just, that part of it was missing.
Is it a deficit?
I mean, it wasn't really a deficit budget, just the line that's saying what was available.
So, if that had been there, it would not have been a deficit budget? Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Yes. It's two small letters, but it's a very deep word.
Councilman Wells, you're not recognized right now. Okay? Mr. Scott, were you done?
Yeah, it's in Houston, but I'm talking.
Okay. Councilman Wells, you just said that I was interrupting, so let's, let's, let's both try to do better. How about that?
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Houston?
I'm sitting right here, so...
Ms. Day?
Okay. This budget is not an actual, this is just what you're projecting that you're gonna get. Not the actual figures of what's gonna be taken in or what's gonna be spent.
Correct.
So...
We have to over the expense part. We want over the expense part.
Well, just one second. Oh, yeah, I didn't know if you were gonna... She asked over that? Because you just covered the revenues, I didn't know.
Who is she?
She gonna propose some changes?
Yeah, I was gonna propose a change in the police department, for example.
Okay, like what?
Hold on, everybody. Hold on, everybody.
Who is she?
Hold on, everyone.
She said, hold, hold, hold.
Hold on. Okay. This is Cindy Thompson. She's with Allen Green in Williamson. She is our C P A that does our reconciliations. She helps us with our monetary checks. She's been doing it for a number of years. Ms. Day asked her a question, so go ahead and finish your comments.
You know, I'm thinking that the budget is something that you're projecting, you know, not the actual. And you can always go back and amend it if it's not...
Yes.
You exceed, but you know, you're supposed to. So, that's all I got to say.
Mr. Wilson? Okay? No, sir. All right? Nobody's gonna say anything smart to you, so we're gonna ask you not to say anything smart to anyone, okay? Thank you, sir, I appreciate it. Yes, sir.
Okay, I, I, I understand what you are saying about this projection. However, it's called a plan. And the law states that you cannot publish your plan or projection when it's in a deficit. I don't care how y'all try to earth it. For several years, when you and Mr. Scott was on the Budget Committee, we have published deficit budgets. So, now, we can't get around doing things the right way. And, and Ms. Thompson can say, all you want, but we, it says funds available. It says that. But however, it says your rev, your expenditures can not, it says, shall not. It's different. It says your, the total of proposed expenditures shall not, which means it's not supposed to happen, shall not exceed the total of estimated funds available for the ensuing fiscal year. So, if there's some additional fund that's available, it should have been included in the budget. And it was not. So, we can say, if you did this, if you did that, we did. Bottom line. So, which means now, we're still out of compliance. And Ms. Thompson know it. She's just being careful in what she's saying. That's why she was asked, can you publish a deficit budget? She said, no, you cannot.
Okay. Mr. Wilson?
First and foremost, uh, if we had a deficit, I don't think we had a deficit budget on last year to answer the attorney's question. Because if I can recall, we wanted to amend the budget, so we had funds available, there will be no reason to amend that budget. So... Pardon?
Don't, let's, let's not interrupt him because I, I've asked him not to interrupt. So, let's let everybody speak and have their turn. Go ahead, sir.
So, I'm, I'm, I'm asked, I'm answering your question that you, your comment, that you asked, a question you asked the mayor about was there a finding? That wouldn't have been a finding because the budget didn't show a deficit on last year, on last year's budget. So, uh, and if the account, uh, from Allen Green and whomever the company is, if they do, you know, whatever reconciliations, I, I don't see why she should be here answering the city's questions that Mr. Odom should be answering. And my question here to you, Mr. Odom, I guess we, we, we failed to realize that before Mayor Finison quit, we had a financial crisis that we needed, we needed a large sums of funds, over three, four hundred thousand dollars. So, where is that money? Why couldn't we use the available funds that we have available? I'm sure she, she don't know about it because she, she's trying to figure out what I'm saying. But there was a letter sent out, Ms. Thompson, throughout the whole community, saying that we had a large deficit of four hundred, five hundred thousand dollars. And they were trying to find, you know, this money, what we, what we should do about it. So, if there is money available, I'm asking, and I'll put a public request, and I'm sure Madam Hayden will do it as well, for the available money that Ms. Thompson is talking about, that those funds that are available as of today, we should be requesting those funds to see what accounts they're in, what's available, how long they've been there, et cetera. If the city... No, you, you, you can converse.
So, I, I just wanted a little bit of clarification. This budget is for the general fund and general fund only. And that notice that you sent out for that three hundred, four hundred thousand, that was mainly to do with the water and utility fund. And that was a result of Magnolia not collecting revenues for the city for February and March. We did not have those revenues available, which caused part of that crisis.
It was a little bit more than that.
But, but, I mean, I'm, that's, that, that was more not, it wasn't, it was more of a utility sewer fund crisis that was draining our general fund. Because the general fund was having to supplement the water and sewer company for that shortfall of those revenues for those months.
Well, that wasn't what, how, how it was written to the, to the public or explained to the public. You might...
Well, I think it was in, I, I can't remember the letter exactly, but I know that was more what the...
Even if it's general funds...
Am I remembering correctly?
So, I, I, I think his question, if I'm understanding you correctly, Mr. Wilson, what he's saying is, if we said that we were in a deficit, well, we were having a, a financial crisis, and now we're saying that there were funds available that could go towards this budget, why weren't those funds used to help offset?
They were.
Okay.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure that everybody was clear.
Some of those funds were available.
So, where are the funds? Even now, you say this budget is for general funds, which brings up a bigger red flag. If we have monies available in general funds, you're saying that we have a one, one point five, one point...
Well, I, I was saying, and, 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 Mr. Wells was correct. That's what we had at the end of twenty-four. And so we have used some of those funds for twenty-five, but not the full amount. And the exact total is yet not been determined, I'm still wa, working on the end financials, because we're just now getting the rest of the payables.
Do, do you know where those, do you know where those funds are, which accounts those funds are in?
Yes, they're in, yes.
You do?
Yeah.
Which account is it?
Well, I mean, they're in, they're in the general fund bank account, they're in the sales tax account, they're in the federal rescue account, they're in the wa, um. There really isn't much money in the water, but there's a little bit in sewer.
So how much money do we have in the federal rescue account? Oh, we, we completed that.
I would, um, I, I don't know exactly off the top of my head, but it was.
Let, let, let me, let me.
No, 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 I, I, I wanna, I wanna continue, let's not divert, um.
But I mean, I don't know that number right off the top of my head, and I can't tell you exactly what it is today, I know I have a statement for September.
See, that's where the, that's where the issue's coming in there.
But that.
That's where the issue's coming in, especially in general funds. Uh, we, we've been trans, transferring monies from one place to another place, and the public's not being aware of where these funds are going, and how they're coming, and, and leaving, and, uh, those, those types of things. But today, we bring some light to it, because now, as of tomorrow morning, we want to know the funds, ju, all general funds. The, these accounts, what's in those accounts.
No problem.
I'm not, Mr., Mr. Odom.
No problem.
Well, I'm not saying anybody's taking a dime, but what I'm saying is, that I don't believe there's a one point five million dollar cushion in any fund. Especially if we have to go through this.
You're correct.
Yeah, I, 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 I know I am, I, I'm pretty swift in finances. So, I, I wanna know, and I'm sure the public wanna know, those accounts. How many accounts do we have in general funds?
Thirteen or fourteen.
Thirteen or fourteen, why?
Maybe fifteen.
Why do we have thirteen, fourteen general accounts?
Are you talking about general fund, I guess?
That, according to what Ms. Thompson is saying.
That would be about four?
According to what Ms. Thompson is saying, this budget has nothing to do with only general funds.
I mean, the, the funds available is just not cash, it's receivables, it's, you know, um, money owed from, you know, other, you know, and other assets that the, that the city has.
Man, you, you, man, and I, I'm gonna be very honest and upfront with you, those funds is, that, that, they are already in this budget. The, the funds that you're talking about, receivables and all, that, that's already in here. So you, 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 these are projections, accounts receivable, and expenditures. So, go ahead.
Receivables would've been last year's revenues, not current year's revenues.
Okay, so, t- tell me, tell me where, where, if, if they're not in this budget, the cushion, the one point, whatever million dollars we have in cushion, if they're not in here already projected, where are they? Where are they?
Let me, uh, let me say this.
Madam, ma'am.
Hold on, hold on, just one second, Mr. Wilson, hold on, just one second, Mr. Wilson, hold on just one second, okay? Because actually, I was about to stop this whole thing, okay? Because.
It looks off too long for a county's saving.
Hold on just one second, everyone.
This is what y'all put out here.
Okay.
That doesn't look like country, a county's saving.
General.
No, it's, it's.
General. Cindy, I wanna ask you, and I wanna make sure that the answer is no. Councilman Wells said.
You just leading, right, to say no. My god, you wanna make sure the answer's no.
You got one more outbreak, okay?
I think one.
Okay, one more.
Stop, stop, stop. You, you don't have to threaten me.
Mr. Wilson, Mr. Wilson, okay?
Stop. Stop.
I think, uh, Councilman Wells is correct, okay? And I think you're absolutely correct about, uh, not publishing a deficit, um, budget. So I think we probably should start this whole thing over, to make sure that we're doing it correct. And I appreciate you saying that, uh, Councilman Wells, I appreciate you bringing that up, okay? So I think what we should do is go ahead, call this meeting, uh, scratch, and start this process over.
You know, uh, look, this, 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 this is my issue right here, you know? This is one thing that we have to start doing. And, and I'm gonna leave it at this, because everything that we're hearing about Alan, that Councilman Harris and myself asked for. Was that all available funds that the city of Tula has. And to this day, we have not received all of it. So when Ms. Thompson come in, you know, uh, get, and she's talking about we have all these available funds, one point seven million dollars, we hadn't heard that. I asked Mr. Odom, what, what, how much available funds we have, he said, we almost broke, there's no money nowhere. And, and that's why I said we have a poor job of being transparent in the city administration. Until we do things the right way, we're gonna keep ending up in these same positions.
I want, I wanna say thank you for, you know, bringing that out, I think you're absolutely right.
But see, I wasn't through it, but this is the most amazing thing about it. Councilman Harris and I have owned this council for years. Everybody else has been in this position for at least four or five. And should be well aware of what the law says when it comes to the budget, like Mr. Scott touted how great the budgets were when he was on the council. And for the past couple of years, they've been deficit budgets. Yeah, yes, I promise you.
No, we have not.
I promise you.
Would we have not, they say.
This is the first one I've ever.
They haven't, this is the first one.
Go, go back and look at last year's budget, go back and look at it.
And as far as the.
Last year's budget.
Also, when you look at the, start and finish.
Last year's budget, that was audited, we had an ending budget period, and we, we, um, budgeted an ending one point two million dollars. And that's supposed to be included, the, um, the amounts available for appropriations.
Okay, let me go back to what I'm saying.
Let me get. Yeah, we did.
Let me go back to what I'm saying. I'm saying when the budget was first posted in the paper, it was a deficit budget. But now, what happens is, throughout the year, we'll come back and start adding all kind of stuff, in the end, when it's time for us to get audited. And so I remember asking this day about the good city, I asked, what was the one point seven million dollars, how can we use that? To help the city do different things in the city, they said that that's not money that we have on hand. So, so we're paying Ms. Thompson sixty-some thousand dollars, we're paying Mr. Odom sixty-some thousand dollars, and we still getting things wrong.
Well, you're absolutely right in this case, when you're right, you're right.
What is, what is.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'd like to request, right, uh, tomorrow, in writing, uh, the bill just come up about the one point four million dollars.
One point seven.
One point seven million dollars duration, I'd like, Mr. Odom, I'm gonna request in writing, for you to give me a copy of every bank account that we have, the ending and beginning of money of policy, Mr. Odom.
Ending when, beginning when?
Uh, for the, the funds, as far as, for the, for the year, and I'm requesting in writing.
Yes, you can request that.
The date is Wednesday, and hopefully you can have it for the last Friday, if possible. Thank you.
And we shouldn't have any American Rescue money, we was, we had to allocate all the American Rescue money, prior to the last fiscal years, there should be none of that.